Okay, Mr. Dr. Sager, are there any changes to our agenda?
Yes, if you look at number two, the presentations, letter B, there will not be a presentation on the Milton High School Trades Fair. There'll be an update with the dates of when it is, but there won't be a presentation between then.
Okay, and that's the only change?
Correct.
So with that noted change, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
We got a motion from Tom and a second from Karen. Are there any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Next item would be action on our minutes, and these would be the minutes from the Monday, March 12th meeting.
I think we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
We got a motion from Tom and a second from Don to accept those minutes as presented. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you. Next item, B, is action on our vouchers.
A move of approval of the vouchers from March 12th, 2018. Checks drawn on Bank of Milton in amount of $567,824.48. There were voids totaling $1,303.27.
We got a motion from Betsy and a second from Tom to approve those vouchers. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. We come to F, which is building and department announcements.
All right, this time I will turn it over to the officials who are here.
Susan Probstner, this is um, can you hear me? Okay, okay. Two updates, student services. The last two months during our PD day, we had a special training by Mark Perry, and he talked to us on implicit bias. We want the entire staff to work through that administration, really looking at, we all have biases someplace, we need to figure out where they are, because acknowledging them, we are then better able to work with people and build connections, and we really want to get to do that with our students. And then, in special end, we're in the process of planning for the transition for the kids who are moving from third grade to fourth, from sixth to seventh, and from eighth to ninth. We have students with disabilities transitioning, we want to make sure that we are prepared for them in the next building as best as we possibly can do.
All right, at the middle school, we hope to see you at our musical, which is Friday night, Mary Coppins Jr. is at 6:30 Friday night, 2:30 Saturday. The students and staff have been hard at work on musical for about three months now, so kudos to all of them for their hard work. We had our first, we were kind of the guinea pigs for the district for the first student assembly for our Alice protocols today, that happened during our advisory at the middle school today. I really appreciate Mr. Schutz's contribution to that, as well as our partners with Milton Police Department enrolling that out. The students were wonderful during the assembly, had a lot of great questions. We actually practiced some mock drills today during advisory. Lastly, we had an awesome eighth grade field trip on Friday to Madison with the Engineering Expo. We heard a lot of great comments from the community at the Engineering Expo about our students' behavior, so kudos to the staff for pulling that up. It's a huge logistical planning effort on their part to get that off the ground, and then our students were awesome during that educational field trip.
At Harmony and Consolidated, and probably the same for the other K-3 schools, fourth quarter, now we're a couple weeks into fourth quarter, and it's all about the balance of keeping the students motivated through engaging opportunities and keeping them focused on their academics, to focus on achievement. So there's a lot of organization around testing and really trying to measure how much they've grown as students over the course of the year, but also fitting in lots of assemblies and field trips and wonderful opportunities that extend their learning beyond the classroom walls. So that's fourth quarter in a nutshell of the K-3, it's very fun. On the summer school front, Matt Beeter Wolf, Sarah Warren, and I are working hard to staff our summer school program. We're excited about the opportunities for our Milton families and students this year, a couple new options and a lot of old favorites that you'll hear about as the summer goes on. But we worked hard today and will work hard again later this week to continue the staffing discussion. So it's a busy time, even though there was snow to start the day, we were planning summer.
Ditto on Mrs. Stuckey with the whole K-3 fourth quarter. And at last, we are also, we are, have just begun a community mentorship program, and so we are in the midst of that new endeavor where we have community members come in, and it's called our Lunch Buddy Program, and they come in and they're paired with a specific student to be a mentor to that student one day a week during lunch, just as another positive role model for that child to have and to feel extra comfortable in the school setting.
Tonight, I'm going to do the high school and the alternative update. For the high school, the FFA banquet is tonight, and that is where Mr. Bill Horn is at. So also, we have the ACP presentations coming up for all of our seniors on April 17th, 19th, and then just a few in the morning on the 23rd. I think we fit all of our students into those three weeks. We have a busy week, the week of April 23rd. We have the ACP leftover presentations that morning. The next day, on April 24th, we have ACP Aspire testing for ninth and 10th graders. On the 25th, we're going to have the Job Fair, and then also our Alice training with our students. On the 26th and the 27th, we have the Trades Fair, as Tim was talking about, those are the dates for the Trades Fair, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. That is open to the community, really well received last year. So our students at Milton High School will be there on Thursday, the 26th, open to the community from 3:00 to 5:00 that evening, and then on the Friday, the 27th, we're going to host it for other Rock County schools to come in and see the Trades Fair this year. FBLA is at State this week, and I'm sure I'm missing 100 other things. Next step, Earth Week is kind of one of the centers of our program. That week is very busy for us, we go all around town and help our community with cleanup and different projects, so they will be out and about that whole week, I think it's that week of the 23rd. We're also starting the McFarland Pheasant Farm Project that we do with the ID students at the high school, so that's really fun to gather our kids with some of the high school students for that project. And then, extra good wishes on the day down the 24th, that is one of the last days for some of our GDO Next Step students to take one of their last tests, not all of them, but a lot of them will be taking their last test on that day, so eight kids will be testing that day, that's a lot of kids and a lot of tests, so good wishes that day, please.
For Northside, we had a really fun community building assembly on Friday. Some of you know, April is Autism Awareness Month, and as one of our community building exercises, we had a Blueout Day that was generated by Student Council. Our fourth grade, 91% of the students were wearing blue and earned our first traveling trophy for both Spirit Day, so it's a pretty neat event. We also ended the assembly with a game of Kahoot, learning about accountability here in the fourth quarter, as soaring at Northside, one of our themes is accountability, so that was our focus for this last assembly. On the assessment front, we started state testing, Wisconsin Ford at Northside today with our fifth and sixth graders taking the assessment. Many thanks to the tech department and everybody else who helps plan that event, and our fourth grade will be finishing their testing there this week.
In the 4K world, as we move towards the home stretch, I'll call it, preparing our 4K not only students but families to the big transition into all-day kindergarten for next year, that's a process. And speaking of transitions, also working with my 4K staff as we are transitioning over to Small Wonders Learning Center, most of our sites will be there, so that's exciting. At Milton East, I'm going to share with you an event that took place prior to spring break. My staff put together a Moms Night Out, we called it, with the disclaimer that upon the success of Moms Night Out, we would be having a Dad's Night Out, just in case, maybe equal. At our Moms Night Out, we invited moms to come in and learn about literacy and how to help their child at home, so what things that you can do as a parent, and working with your students, and even provided them with some tools that they could take home and try. Also integrated some technology from our tech integrators, and it was a great success, and we look forward to having more opportunities like that for our families.
Looking forward to Dad's Night Out, can I agree with you? The AMHR, one hour. We've been working on our teacher compensation model and tallying all of the PD tickets from December, January 1st of '17 to December 31st of '17. So we're working on that piece, and hopefully we'll be rolling up the month of April and salary escalation, and then followed by that, there are the teacher contracts from May 15th.
Thank you. And then, last but not least, in the world of communications and school safety, as Matt had indicated earlier, we did the Alice Response Protocol Training at the middle school today. All of our schools and all of our staff will be going through that training this particular month. The second thing that we've been working on is Tim and some of the other district leadership we met last week, with the governor's new proposal, and actually now signed into law the $100 million that is available for grants. We did send an email into the Department of Justice, we heard back from them about an hour ago. They're still vetting out exactly what's going to be eligible and when it's going to be eligible, whether that be infrastructure or staffing, or a combination of both, whether those are going to be entitlement grants or whether they're going to be competitive grants. And so once we learn more about that, we'll come back and we'll share that with the full Board of Education, so we can decide what event you might want to apply for.
Okay, well, thank you all. Under public comment, it might be just a good opportunity to congratulate the folks in the recent school board election, the top three vote getters, Donovan McKenna, Brian Poplin, and Joel Martin, congratulations, and also congratulations to all candidates that ran for the Milton School Board. Just want to extend congratulations to all those people, wish them well.
Can we congratulate Sean Pepperkey too for a COAL scholarship? Cole Warren, he's not here today, but he won the COAL scholarship.
Sure, okay. Okay, we shall, so, okay, very good, glad you reminded us, so thank you. We'll go right into the scheduled, the public comments, section G. We've got a few people that have signed up to speak here this evening. I think everybody knows the protocol here, so I won't read all the rules of public comment. So we'll just start out and go right down the line. The first one on the list is Lance Fenn. Lance, if I could just, if you allow me to ask a question, under the issue, you do have letter response? You had written down you wish to speak to the board regarding letter response?
Yes.
And can I ask if it's regarding the letter that was mailed to you, signed by me?
Yes, it is.
Okay, do you have anything else you wanted to talk about in the public comment?
No, B, I guess my only point is being that during March 5th meeting, where I cannot basically come or have a comment, my name is brought up over 60 times, and so I thought I would respectfully, you know, have my response to the entire board, because, you know, that letter was sent to the entire board, so I thought the entire board should hear about it.
The letter that you're referring to is the letter that was from me dated March 21st, and we sent to you 19 days ago, asking for your response, so that we have an opportunity to meet with you.
Right.
And so, you've obviously received the letter?
Yes.
Okay, I would respectfully decline your opportunity to speak to that letter at this time, okay? With the door is still open, the opportunity exists for you to come and speak to this matter, but given the fact that we would not have the ability to respond to your comments, I don't think it would be appropriate to allow you to speak to this letter.
Okay, it's not in the content that you might think it is, I mean, it's a respectful letter, and...
Lance, are you still willing to come and speak with us as the letter stated the opportunity?
Well, it just explains why I will not be.
Why it won't be?
Right, and I guess my response to your response is I would write to it, respond per my freedom of speech, two allegations that were put forth against me during the March 5th meeting. I should be able to respectfully respond publicly in this board, since I was not able to do so at that time. Should you not allow me that writing, I request that you put in writing the reasons for such and have all board members present sign the date.
At the March 5th meeting that you referenced, Mr. Fenn, it was an open session here.
I know it wasn't.
Was that, that was not an open session?
It wasn't known that it was open session until 5:05.
But it was an open session.
Nobody knew it was open session.
All right, Bob, Bob, so just one point, Tim, is that the, everything that I think Lance you're referring to is in this letter, with regards to the opportunity that we wanted to discuss it.
Some people weren't notified after the...
Guys, this is, this is, I'm interrupting, I'm interrupting. This is not a, this is not a topic on the agenda, this is public comment.
Right.
Because we're not even asked to respond to the board or comply with the board, you can do that by contacting Mr. Cullen or myself, but this is not, this is, we are, it's not the discussion at this time.
So, man, ask one question.
No things on a public, no stuff, it isn't...
This is, this is not a public, it's not a public comment, appropriate thing.
He cannot have a public comment on the meeting at all, is that what you're saying?
The invitation is there for Mr. Fenn to come and speak with us, as the letter so clearly indicates.
Yeah, I don't know what he's going to say, but I think if he wants to make a public comment on the procedures and the process, I think it's, just like any other person, I think it's his right to do that.
This isn't a public comment, this is a dialogue back and forth, so if Mr. Fenn would like to address the board, he certainly can, he's been offered the opportunity to. This is not the venue to do that.
Your allegations were in an open session, full of people, now you're asking my only response can be on a closed meeting, where you only pick the people that are present?
Well, like I say, the invitation is quite clear in that last paragraph of the letter, and, you know, I would hope that up, I did ask for at least one other board member to be present with me, we could perhaps have more than one, but I can't have more.
What board member would that be?
Would you be interested, Brian?
Well, I want to know who the other board member was.
Well, Tim, President, Vice President?
Okay. I'll be cool. Can I bring counsel and a review?
Hey, Lance, what you have to do is you need to contact Mr. Cullen, and you guys can talk about the ground rules of that meeting. This is not the form for, this is not a dialogue, this is not public comment, what's happening right now, so what you need to do is comply with what Mr. Cullen is asking, and set up a time to chat with him via the phone, or set up a time to come, but this is not, this is not for a dialogue.
Like I said, I want reasons put on paper, signed by the district, of why I cannot express my freedom of speech in this meeting.
So, Tim, just to make a clarification here, my understanding is that this wasn't going to be a dialogue, it just all of a sudden started becoming a dialogue with the questions that you and Bob had.
Well, we have lots of people talking right now, and what I'm saying is that Mr. Cullen has asked as a board president, if the parameter for this discussion of this item is not a discussion here at the public comment, and so you respect that.
And Brian, that was, that was the charge this board gave you back on the March, what was it, March 5th meeting?
Right.
As we concluded that meeting.
Right, so, say that again.
On March 5th, when we had this special meeting, that Mr. Fenn was not in attendance at, in open session, I might add.
Yeah, this was, you got to be careful with that open session, because it's not like it was an open session where it was publicly hosted, like two hours before, it wasn't even...
It's the open session that you requested.
Right, you requested it to be open session.
And you, we have to go back, and we can do this, but the open session was not even an open session until we actually voted on it, which was at 5:00. So there wasn't even a posting, and there was no notification to the public, except for the people who, you know, some people contacted, that that was possibly even going to be an open session.
So Lance, the invitation still stands that the conclusion of this meeting...
We can't go into closed session until we vote to go into closed session at the meeting.
Yeah, Charlie, no more, please. But Lance, the invitation still stands, I'd be glad to be with you after the meeting, set the time and place.
Because this is just an explanation of my side, my point of view, why I cannot just come into your facility. Are you going to allow me to tape it, or is counsel, can I have counsel present? Because after what transpired, I don't trust going into a, I would rather have a neutral situation with neutral people observing. Either they have, or I just read this and it's not...
Again, this is, we're well beyond the capacity of public comment right now, so again, Lance, if you have concerns or wishes, which presents the board, you can gladly do that after the meeting, or as Mr. Cullen has offered, to contact him, and you can set up the parameters of that meeting, but that's not for this discussion currently.
This was going to be less than three minutes to address the entire board, the entire board was part of what happened before, so I thought everyone, Karen Hall, Betsy Lupte, everyone should be involved with hearing.
This, again, this is not the form for that, Lance, and so you know that you've been offered the vehicle, and so now, but if we're done right now, though, we're done with this case.
I will take this as a, you not allowing me freedom of speech to address an open meeting, what, answer to what you guys did during the March 5th open meeting.
With all due respect, I think the three-page letter that was provided speaks to it in great detail, and the invitation still stands.
That's your side, and I would like to present my side, all the answers to that.
With us not being able to respond to that, because it's not an agenda item, I'm not going to allow you to have a response. What?
I was not able to respond...
Again, when we're done with this, we're going forward on to the next...
You haven't been able to respond for 19 days since receiving that?
Counsel has looked at that. Counsel said it's over for me to come in here, so now you're saying I can't have counsel with the meeting that you have control over.
With all due respect, I'm going to decline that opportunity to speak about the incident of February 12th.
Okay, and I request the reasoning put on paper, and I want some signatures on it. I want a referral.
We'll take it under advisement, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. Next person to sign up for public comment is Amy Jackson.
I have to turn every time I drop my daughter off at school, at Milton High School for her safety, so from beginning of the school year, she gets her glasses pulled off, her face is made of wood by walking down the hall by a special student. The student heads into her classroom and dither in the head. She has to sit in the office to, so the student can walk past the hall, so she can go to this room, so she has to pull back, wait till he's gone, going to her classroom, be late, and after, I have multiple meetings with the school office, but if she still has not gotten through. So I just, I mean, my daughter, she's not missing the last school, she doesn't miss two, which that counseling she's not going to, and she's put on a sickle. I shouldn't have to worry about my daughter not being safe at school, and, you know, I shouldn't have to call them every time, saying, make sure she's okay, not okay. And then there's a videotape that was made too, that I was not aware of, and I, then I also asked for a booking, give her two, that I might not be able to make a booking. Principal told me I could not consider booking, so I'd like to see if I can get something resolved with this.
I think I'm just going to refer that to Mr. Sager. Okay, thank you. Let's see, next up is Frido Hill.
First item has to do with history, probably back about a month or better. I listened to a couple of tapes, I heard a couple of board members bullying real bad. I thought it was atrocious, and I hope the government can come and... Next item, this board signed a contract with JP Cullum to build a building that did not pass. Now, the question I have, is that contract announced now and voided, seeing it wasn't used, or is it still in force? I would hope the board had been sharper on the budget, sunset claws on. Next item, I'm hearing different board members on a 7-0 vote. I think that is pathetic. When I see a 7-0 vote, what I see is seven of the people, nobody having individual thought or conviction that they can stand. And that's my opinion, and I'll say that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Frido. I need to talk to him, too. Thank you, appreciate it. And lastly, we've got Karen Hall.
Community members and fellow board members. Tell me where the phone is.
Just a differentiating.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Community members and fellow board members, over the past several weeks and months, there have been many opinions expressed publicly, privately, and written, that paint a very bleak and unhealthy picture of the current school board. As one of your board members, I feel compelled to address this dysfunction, excuse me, that is not only happening on the board, but also within the constituency as well. Unfortunately, these comments have been less than productive from either side. Many of the comments I have heard revolve around the board and its, quote, shady dealings. There's a belief out there that the board is involved in some conspiracy plots against other board members and community members, and we are allowed, in quotes, some backroom deals and secret meetings to get what we want. I can only speak for myself, but I have never participated in such meetings. The fact that this misconception is purported as the truth angers and frustrates me. When I made the decision to run for school board two-plus years ago, I did so because I wanted to make a difference for the students. That vision has not changed, but regrettably has taken a back burner to defending myself and the board against rumors, accusations, and window windows. The other comments that I hear are the board is not listening to what the people have to say, we are not transparent, we are dishonest, and cannot be trusted. Again, I can only speak for myself, if I have ever misled you, not heard you, or offended you in some way I am not aware of, I apologize, as it was not my intention. I admit, I do not have all the answers, I don't even have half the answers, but I'm willing to listen to all sides and make what I feel is the best decision for our students and the district. If that decision is not what you want, let's just agree to disagree, because after all, we are all adults here. It is all too easy to Monday morning quarterback any decision we do not agree with, have all the information forward, or somehow exploit it and misled about. However, the time has come, excuse me, for both sides to put these feelings away and come together, not only for our students, but for our community as well. There has been too much hurt and anger on both sides for this to continue to be productive. The answers must come from all of us, going forward with a solution that will benefit all. To quote one of the great Jewish elders, Hile the Elder, "Do not judge your fellow until you are in his place." And probably his most famous quote, not attributed to him, is, quote, "If not us, who? And if not now, when?" Thank you.
As has been our custom and tradition, there's no one else that has signed up for public comment, however, uh, if there's anyone here that would be so inclined, if it's silly to address the board, that would be your opportunity.
I'm a lot here.
Yes. Thank you, and if you could state your name and your habits, please.
Leanne Covington, I'm from Janesville, Wisconsin.
Can you speak in the microphone?
Leanne Covington, I'm from Janesville, Wisconsin. I'm, uh, speaking in reference to Amy Jackson's, uh, what she spoke about. You have referred it to the judgment at the end of the table. We've already spoken to him, and again, got absolutely no results. We've had multiple meetings with the principal, we've had meetings with this gentleman, uh, we've been told that nothing can be done because the child is special needs. Our, our student is the only student that this child is physically injured. And we would like this matter looked into and settled and resolved.
As I said before, I have referred it onto our superintendent, but I will visit with our superintendent on your, your situation. Okay. Thank you, Leanne. Is there anyone else, uh, that would like to address the board?
Hi, what if you don't mind?
Name and address, please.
I'm Tara Jacobs, and I live at twelve thirty-five South Washington in Janesville. And I also adhere to Ms. Amy, and if you could dismiss me and tell me that you're going to refer it, um, I want you to know I'm coming here as a mother of a special needs child that's been removed from your school district. And first and foremost, I think that countywide, because, um, I deal with people in every city in this county, and Hilton has a great, um, vision, and I think we have a great special needs program. But that being said, um, I've done a lot of discussions with Amy, and I know a lot of the details from her side, obviously. There's three sides to every story, um, but I want to come here as that compassionate person, a compassionate mother, that has a child that hurts people, um, because he doesn't know how to conform to social, um, situations like a lot of us in this room do. Um, and when I heard her story, my heart went out because if this was my child's first child, I would be hugging her in my arms, saying, "What can I do to help you? I am so sorry." And I know because of the HIPAA laws and everything, putting those parents together to try to work this out would be a huge anger, but I feel like there's got to be a starting place for this, for these two children to be able to work together if the school can't offer any other placement for either of these children, or offer a better solution. So that's what it is, and thank you for everything you guys do.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, thank you, everyone, uh, for your comments and public comment. We're going to move on, um, and so we are now at item H, which is student council report, and that would be Miss Gaddy.
All right, um, that's coming back from the student council, has student needs to begin the meeting process for our new officers next year, and planning new activities and progress next year.
All right, anything else? Thank you, Miss Gaddy. Uh, we move on to presentations, and the first one, uh, under section two, or A, a presentation about the, the hearing impaired team.
Good evening, I'll make sure, can you hear me, is this better? Okay. Uh, my name is Jelaine Olson, and I am the deaf and hard of hearing teacher. I am fortunate enough to work with eight of our students throughout the district. I have a four K student all the way to a high school student that I will be introducing in a moment, but I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank some of our staff members who have really gone above and beyond, um, to make this a really fantastic school year for our student Wyatt. Um, it was about a year ago that I got a phone call from Susan Probst, and she said, "We have a student," and he's one of our Milton students, but he's been attending the School for the Deaf and Delevin, and he would like to come back for his senior year and attend Milton High School. And so, um, to wrap your brain around that, I want you to consider that Wyatt had a graduating class of four students at the Wisconsin School for the Deaf, and he was about to enter a high school with 1,200 students. And so, um, you can imagine that we thought he needs to rally some troops, and we need to make sure that we have a team in place to make this a wonderful opportunity for him. And that support really came from the top. And so, um, Susan Probst, our Director of Student Services, and Jeremy Bilhorn, our high school principal, were there from the very beginning, um, starting with attending a meeting that we had with Wyatt at the School for the Deaf, and they continued to provide that support all the way through. So I just wanted to thank them. Um, Chris Sunlin is our speech language pathologist here at the high school, and I've had the great pleasure of working with Chris in the past. She always puts the students' needs first, always. Um, but you've really outdone yourself this time, Chris, because when we talked about what we wanted this to look like for Wyatt, uh, we certainly considered peer relationships. And we weren't going to be able to provide, um, peers that were fluent in American Sign Language, but we wanted peers who at least had some information, um, started to learn Sign Language, had an interest, and it was countless emails that Chris sent, um, where we had, we started Sign Language classes last summer, uh, offered them all throughout the summer. Wyatt was part of that in teaching those classes. And so when he entered our doors in the fall, um, he had peers that he knew and were able to communicate with them even at a basic level. Um, so thank you, Chris. Um, so before school even started, we had a meeting that looked more like a party than a meeting because there were so many people involved. All of his general ed teachers from first semester and second semester, they all attended. Um, we had principals and vice principals, we had counselors and his coaches, and everyone showed up to make sure that they were able to support Wyatt in his, his year here at the high school. They embraced him and embraced this opportunity to also learn and grow as professionals, and so I wanted to thank them. Um, so we had most of our team in place, but there's a big piece that we were missing at the beginning, and that, of course, is a Sign Language interpreter. Now, I remember Wyatt at his meeting, and he said, uh, "Now, when you find an interpreter, you need to make sure the interpreter is skilled and can match my language level." Now, I knew Wyatt for all of five minutes before I realized what a high language level that was, what, uh, what an incredibly intelligent young man we had in our hands. And so now, um, I remember being so incredibly impressed by this young man and what he just said, and scared to death all at the same time, because finding an interpreter can be a bit like a needle in a haystack, as you can imagine. And then we needed to find an interpreter not only with high language levels and skills, we needed somebody who would be willing and able to interpret very specific classes. So Wyatt had completed most of his general ed requirements, and now he was looking at, um, engine repair and welding. And if you don't have the vocabulary or the background knowledge to that, it's very difficult to interpret that. And then we said during our interview process, "We'd also like for you to interpret wrestling." So our student made me on the mat upside down with someone in a headlock, "How do you feel about that?" And so, um, I remember specifically that, um, Jamie said to us, "You know what? I'm a bit of a tomboy. I love all things mechanical. I love interpreting sports and wrestling. Oh, best of all. I'm right down there on the mat." Now, I did not reach across the table and hug her, although that is exactly what I wanted to do. Um, our unicorn interpreter came in the form of Jamie Keith, and she's been working hard here already all night, and will be able to see even more of her talents. But, um, Jamie has been that central person who connects all of the moving parts that, um, is connected to Wyatt, and so I can't thank Jamie enough. Wyatt, I wanted to thank you publicly because you came to this experience with an optimistic attitude and a willingness to work hard and a patience for your deaf and hard of hearing teacher, and so I really appreciate that. Um, it has been a pleasure to not only work with Wyatt, this pastor, and his family. Um, parental support is huge, and I wanted to thank Wyatt and his family. So it is my extreme pleasure to introduce to you our high school student, Wyatt Stoller.
Hello, everyone. My presentation is called "It Takes a Village and One Deaf Student," and why we picked that as the title is because of everyone in this room, you've all been a village for me. So why did I decide to transfer to Milton High School was really for the opportunities. The classes that I couldn't take at the Wisconsin School for the Deaf was probably the biggest reason as to why I transferred. I also wanted to learn how to use an interpreter the correct way. And I wanted to have more experiences going to classes with hearing peers. I live in a hearing world, and hearing people are something that I'm going to deal with every day, and so I wanted to make sure that I was prepared for that as I enter into the real world, because that's something that I did have the opportunity to, um, take a part of in elementary school, but then going to WSDI, I haven't had that experience for a long time. So since I've been here at Milton, we have established ASL Club, and we did celebrate Deaf Awareness Week. ASL Club is really like our own little community in the high school. Uh, we learn lessons once a week, we all get together, and we sign, we learn about deaf culture. And that really kind of led us into celebrating Deaf Awareness Week at the beginning of the school year. Uh, we took different signs and different things related to deaf culture and sent it out to staff and students so that they would have the opportunity to learn a little bit more about my culture, and if they ever met a deaf person, maybe they could use something that they learned. I have been accepted to Blackhawk Tech, and, uh, I am going to be joining the welding program in the fall. And I have also had the opportunity to visit Blackhawk Tech a couple times this year. And during those visits, um, I learned a little bit more about expectations that are going to be expected of me next fall. I've had the opportunity to meet with a disability coordinator and learn about, um, services such as interpreting and real-time captioning. I also was able to, uh, meet the president of Blackhawk Tech as well. This year, I also had another cool experience. Um, Jelaine has a student in Edgerton that I had the opportunity to mentor, and this is a third grade student who is struggling with using an interpreter and struggling with her Sign Language skills, so we were able to get together a few times, and I was able to mentor her and help her become more comfortable. I had the opportunity to go to Edgerton and meet with this student's class. Uh, we chatted with them, we talked about different signs, and then she also had the opportunity to come to the high school where we played the game Guess Who. And, uh, this game really allowed her to become more confident in her signing skills and really trust an interpreter. I also became a Red Hawk wrestler this year, which was a very new experience. Um, I did know the coach, uh, from a summer program, but I've never really had the opportunity to, uh, be a part of a team like that, and that was just something that, uh, really hit home for me. And throughout being on the wrestling team, I feel like my work ethic really developed, my confidence developed, and I really felt that I found, um, found my inner self and began to know myself even better. I also visited a company called Hear Wisconsin, which is located in Milwaukee. And Hear Wisconsin sells different equipment for deaf and hard of hearing people. They have things like lights that will flash when you hit the doorbell, or, uh, telephones that have captioning services on them for hard of hearing people. Uh, we do have a middle school student, his name is Brady, and he went with me to visit Hear Wisconsin, and he is deaf in one ear. And, uh, pretty soon he'll be a high school student, but he was able to buy something called a Shake Awake Alarm Clock, and this goes under, um, his pillow to wake him up in the morning. And then I also bought, uh, a watch that, um, will connect with my phone and let me know when there are messages, and it's very loud. I also met a deaf man, his name is Niall DiMarco, and you might have not heard of Niall, but he is very famous in the deaf community. He was on America's Next Top Model and also Dancing with the Stars. And, uh, he's just a huge role model in the deaf community for anyone who is deaf, for deaf kids, um, so if you get the chance to look him up, you'll find a lot of cool information. But he presented at UW Madison, so I had the opportunity to go there, and he just talked about his life experiences using an interpreter and what it's like not using an interpreter. And there's a few people that I really want to thank, Jelaine, Jamie, and Chris, Mr. Bilhorn, and also Susan, and then, um, my parents. And I just want to thank everyone for all of their support, and also the board, just for everything, um, that I've been able to take advantage of this year. This year's been the best year.
I actually just come in to take a moment to thank Wyatt and his family, Jelaine, Jamie, and the whole teaching staff, administration, and our support staff, and our students. I think it's a great example that shows the spirit of our, our community, of the ways we work together to make sure that students can reach their full potential. And I specifically want to thank Wyatt. Um, while he's constantly thanking us for the opportunities he's gotten in our school, he's been an amazing role model for our students, whether they have disabilities or not. He comes to school and can't hide his disability. He has to communicate in a different way. He has an adult who goes to all classes and events and pep assemblies, does whatever it is she's there. Um, but he embraces who he is and is constantly giving the message that he is not disabled, he is differently abled, and he can do anything anyone else can do. And his confidence and enthusiasm that he, um, has when he takes advantage of things that are offered, I just think is an amazing role model and gift that other students get to be a part of. And he touches everybody, whether he's been in a class, in a sport, in a club, or, like I said, pep assemblies, anytime that there's, um, a public event, um, they, they get an experience to see what it's like for Wyatt to be included fully. And so, kudos to you for choosing to come to our school for your senior year, and thank you for all you've done.
Okay, well, thank you all for the excellent, uh, presentations, and a special little thank you to Wyatt. I had the opportunity to witness Wyatt wrestling. Thumbs up. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, the next item has been scratched, except, uh, you just want to make mention of the date again on that high school transfer?
Correct, that's the April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, uh, at the high school, Thursday and Friday, three to five P.M. for the community, uh, booking.
Three to five P.M., the community is welcome, of course, it's for the community, correct?
And we have students in the day, and then the community at three to five.
For both, we have students and the community, so, uh, we encourage your participation on that, so, uh, look forward to that. Uh, we're going to move on to section three, updates. Uh, the first thing we've got, uh, is Mr. Knutson here to give us an update on MRAC.
I'm here for the MRAC update for the year. I'm going to pulse around a little bit, looking at that, put that order, I apologize for that. So, uh, first thing I've got here is our softball and baseball. We are currently in the process of doing registration for our four K through second grade. I'm going to pulse around a little bit looking at that, put that order, and apologize for that. So first thing I've got here is our softball and baseball. We are currently in the process of doing registration for our 4K through second grade. Our 3rd through 8th grade finished last Friday, and we're in the process of getting teams for your coaches and draft. Our numbers are pretty strong this year. We've got 243 total boys in grades 3 through 8th grade and 47 for the girls, which is up by 10 for both. Our 4K through 2nd grade, we break it down into little hitters, which is our 4K, the kindergarten, and 101 total are signed up. Our big hitters, which is 1st and 2nd grade, is 66. Pitch machine leagues, 39. And our minor league, which is a player pitch, is at 5 right now, but that still has April 30. So I just made those numbers, so I keep planning for us with that. The next thing I have here is our Summer Marlins Swim Program. We will start taking registration for our Summer Marlins Swim Program, April 30. We typically get between 55 and 65 swimmers for that. Our season runs, one day after we get out of school. So this year we do it June 11th, so we'll run until August 3rd. It's usually an eight-week type of program we run. We do practice Monday through Thursdays, so we put beats in there as well. Typically have 7 to 8 beats, some at the high school summer, like Monday through Thursday. The other thing we do too much featuring is our swim lessons. Our swim lessons are going to also start on August, I'm sorry, April 30. We will do four sessions. And how we run our sessions are eight weeks, I'm sorry, eight days and two week sessions. So Monday through Thursday, Monday through Thursday. We take out the 40 per session, so that puts us at 200 students potentially for our programs. And then our August 6th through 16th, which is our fourth session, we have our swim program, our swim team's starting in there, so we have to tie jobs. We only do three sessions of that, and that's mid-morning type stuff. Our programs are two in the mornings, we go from 9:00 to 10:00, 10:00 to 11:00. And then our afternoon programs are 3:30 till 6:00. We break that off into 40 in sessions. We also do our MRAC lap swim every morning. So we typically get anywhere from 10 to 20 people a morning that does that, Monday through Fridays. And we also are going to have our open swims, again, the famous swims, which is going to be Monday through Fridays, from 1:00 to 3:00 every day throughout summer. We may do a lot, depending on our staffing, too. We may do night ones as well, two nights, certainly nights a week, depending on how much we've got on our staff. A lot of people like to come back on 6th, 3rd, 7th, and so forth. Another good thing we're going to be doing here so shortly will be our 3rd grade swim program. We start that here at the end of May. Consolidated will become a first, it'll become a May 4th, 11th, and 18th. And then after Memorial Day weekend, we will have Harmony West and East coming. West will come in the mornings. East will come in midday, and then Harmony will be at the end of the afternoon. So we'll do that for four days. That's a very big program for us, which is every 3rd grade comes in. At least we have a piece of West on this. A lot of them are pretty old still already, but some of them we are not. So that is a good program for that. You can see great improvement in four days. Amazing for that. We also did again the Northside Minecraft Club. We had 28 students this fall with that. We also did again with our Wash U large program here, so we were going, actually, there we did that in this fall or this winter, we had 31 students with that. The new ones we did this year was a Northside Stone Club and a Middle School Stone Club. They both were popular, popular hits for us. The Northside one was 24 students, and we're actually going to start it up here shortly again in the next couple of weeks for the next session. And then the Middle School one, we had eight students. It was a very popular, active, considered, all over, knowing a lot of them wanted to go. So that's all of our stuff for MRAC here for the past year. Any questions?
Lance, what did you say the baseball numbers were?
For 3383?
Yeah.
243 signed up.
And you're probably going to get 15 more, yeah.
Yeah, we always do.
So the girls are 47?
47, yeah.
And are they still, like, going for Atkinson? Is there traveling?
Yeah, we do for our baseball, we play for Atkinson. So it's a right-based league where we play different times. It's a lot better for us to do that because of, it gets very old playing each other over an old dollar for 12, 14 games. So it's nice to mix it up with that. Our softball's different, we play a clock-tongued league, and that is the old southern league, so it's water, whitewater, waterford, east shore, elk horn, dolvin, we go that way. Girls' softball's a lot different than the boys. There's a, like, this year, waterford does not have any girls, they don't have enough girls to sign up. Whitewater is looking for some more, it's time to make there girls to play, they only have seven. So we're pretty fortunate on the numbers to fill with what we have. So we're able to be a league and not just figure out how we're going to handle ourselves or go to other teams and keep that ahead.
And you do have an end of year tournament, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, well, thank you, Lance. Thank you for all you do. Moving on, let's see, we are going into 4, Section 4, which is the Strategic Planning Committee Report. And I'll turn it over to Betsy Lepke.
Thanks, Bob. The Strategic Planning Committee met last Wednesday, April 4th. Quite a few items on our agenda. Since all board members were present for most of that meeting, I'm not going to go into huge detail, but I'd like to walk through the kind of the items that we talked about and then the action steps. First item was a review and a finalization of parameters for facilities improvement solution. Those were reviewed, we made a couple adjustments, and then have sent those out to the board. At this time, after some thought, I'm thinking that it may make sense to wait until after the new board members are installed and then vote on those parameters so that we're sure that everybody, especially our new board members, get a chance to input into that list. I know we had a couple board members had a couple concerns about maybe one or two of the items. And so I think it would make sense for us to, rather than approve that tonight, which we have on the agenda for possible action, I would suggest that we hold off on that and, again, get the input of our new board members and make sure that we have some consensus there before moving forward. The next item we talked about was the list of facility needs. What we did was we started with a list that was originally created in September of 2015. Tim and Stephen had gone through that list and made some updates for us. We walked through one school, that being Consolidated, to get a feel for what are the maintenance items that we feel would be appropriate to put on a list that would basically be included with a referendum if we go that route. And our criteria was really items that were ADA issues, safety and security, and/or large-ticket items that could not be handled through Stephen's five-year capital improvement budget. And so we went through Consolidated, I think that was very eye-opening for people. Again, from the initial list that was created by architects and engineers and staff to just what are all the things that could possibly be done at all the schools. And then we whittled that list down to those things that kind of fit that criteria. And we'll talk a little bit about the next steps to that. And I think that was very helpful for the board, certainly was for me, to have Stephen there and Tim there, walk through those particular items and figure out what ones might get targeted for the maintenance piece of our cover referendum if we go that route. The next item was a discussion on prioritization method and process. And Brian had brought some samples of some very different methods, ways to prioritize projects, capital improvement projects. We walked through a couple of those, kind of settled on one that we think might be one that we could customize and work with, but also sent those to all board members and encouraged everyone to look through that entire page that gives some good ideas to people or have some suggestions from that. We appreciate more input on that. We also discussed the use of an owner's rep, which is a conversation that this board has had before. Again, I think the committee, the board members present, felt that it would still be important to, as we move forward, to use a consultant that was not associated with either of our contractor or our architect, that would be, and/or the school district, that would provide an objective view as we move forward and help us to, as we move forward with potential solutions, be able to give us some input, again, in a very objective way. So the next steps that we identified from our meeting, number one was a customization of, again, one of the two priority methods from the school district in Florida that we took a look at. And Tim is going to take a look at that and try to customize that in a draft form so we can make it relevant for Milton. We also decided that we would have Tim and Stephen administrators take those maintenance lists that we looked over and take the other schools other than the high schools and kind of break those down like we did with Consolidated and, again, come up with a list of things that we think would be maintenance items that would go into a referendum if the board decides to do that. And then, again, Brian, I think, sent out those prioritization methods already. And then Tim is going to talk to a possible consultant, owner's rep consultant, and then come back and give us some information to the board following that research. So I walked through that pretty fast. Comments from key members of the board members?
Yeah, I have a comment. Is the Strategic Planning Committee, the three people on that committee, are they going to decide the prioritization process? Are all the board members going to have a chance to weigh in on the final process that we decide on? Because usually we do our work in the committee. So are we going to decide that?
Brian, do you want to describe kind of the, just at a high level, the Florida one that we're going to customize a little bit?
Yeah.
At least as a starting point?
Yeah, so the one that we took as an example, and it's one that we can definitely customize to Milton's needs, but it had seven different criteria or categories, if you will, that address different aspects of that district, when it came to their mission statement and the learning objectives and education objectives. And so things that were in there were like space needs and also future programming and trying to remember some other things. But in any case, there are seven different categories in here, and then each category has a specific numerical ranking. And that numerical ranking is based on data from different reports that are up there that can be accessed by the public and the district. And so when it comes to your question, you know, is it all going to be within the Strategic Planning Committee or is the board going to weigh in on it? I'm going to defer to Betsy as far as how that goes, but I guess what I would like to see is, because everybody has a stake in this and it is important for everybody to have a comment, I do think that everybody should have a comment and give their opinions on what should be included and what shouldn't. The only thing, in my opinion, that it should include is that it be aligned to the mission statement of the district as well as strategic plan, because otherwise, you know, we're probably not going to place ready. And like I said, I think I said this, Strategic Plan Committee, but, you know, there's stuff on that example that we'll probably want to take out because it doesn't necessarily pertain to Milton. And there might be some things that we might want to put in that isn't on there that does pertain, but that's, I think that's going to be the process as we go through it. And I think Tim was going to Miltonize it, so to speak. And I think that's a good starting point to get, you know, some comments and whatnot.
Yes, the other question I have, after I looked over this, is that is it going to be the board that does the sole prioritization? Or we can have community members de-involved in prioritization? We can have an outside group to weigh in on the prioritization so we don't have the biases that might exist? Is all that going to be addressed? I would like to see all that addressed before I can vote on this.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And when you look at that example, what's nice about that is the seven different categories, they actually have different people responsible for actually determining what the numerical score is for each category. So since you have different people actually responsible for those different categories, it does take away some of the bias. However, as far as whether or not we get a consultant to do some of the categories or if we do internally, that's been decided. But that is something that, in my opinion, we need to define before we go forward and actually vote on it.
And one more thing I'd like to see in this prioritization is that every board member goes to every area that we prioritize and sees what's happening within the school in an event or something else before we ever prioritize. Because I think you have to live it in order to really understand it.
Yep.
And I think before we can vote on it, that has to happen. And that's the only way I'm going to vote on this nothing, is if we all take, actually see what happens. Because I think that's an important aspect, is that we all take part in this. And if we have community members, however we want to do this with community members, they have to be required to do the same thing before they can weigh in on this. If we want to really get a true picture of what's happening going on.
I agree. I just had a question. I was looking at the samples you'd sent, because I didn't have time the other night, but is there any Wisconsin schools our size that use that rubric in ratings? Because that would be more careful. We had out-of-state samples in a municipality, it looked like for one of them. And I was just wondering if there's schools our size. When I asked PRA the other night at the end, they said they must have, perhaps, the industry have samples and ratings. And he said, yeah, we do it for large-scale districts, like, he gave the example of Madison, a 57 school. He said typically, they don't do it for schools this size. So I didn't know if there were any schools about our size or whatever that there were samples. I think you had mentioned Racine or somewhere.
Kenosha was.
Or Kenosha, but that's, again, way bigger than that. So I didn't know if there's anything out there that's related to our size.
Yeah. I hadn't gone that far into the research. I mean, that's something that I can look at, you know. And I think the one thing to be careful of is definitely size plays a part, but even with a school district our size, they may not have the same number of needs, if you will, or things that need improvement due to different types of circumstances. So, you know, I can definitely look and see that, but, you know, we just want to be careful that we compare apples to apples.
And this process, too, I also saw that they hired an individual to take care of this process. Because I don't think we can add this on to what the people already have. So maybe, like, I think we talked about that, it might take a while to set this up and then maybe once we get going, go back. So maybe initially, we should have a discussion about hiring someone to set this up, to sort our repertoire over. They have their job to do, too.
Sure, sure, yeah. And I don't think we're going at that point yet, as far as, you know, determining who's going to take over which category. I mean, first, we got to figure out whether or not this is something we want to do. And then, once we do, we got to figure out which categories are appropriate. So we were a couple steps away yet before, you know, deciding on whether we bring in a consultant or we bring in some experts within the community or, you know, however we do it internally or whatever. So I hear what you're saying, but yet I don't think we have, we're not at the stage yet where we're, you know, where we can actually determine how we're going to do that.
Yeah, I agree. We have, this is just something I would want to discuss.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, we are a few minutes away from going on.
Right, no, I agree, I agree.
My other concern is just as laypeople and board members, I'm not an expert in some of the areas that we'd be looking at. I feel like that's why the district has Stephen in this department, who are the experts, who live and breathe these buildings. And I think, you know, he has to obviously be an integral part of this because they're the ones that work with all the equipment, work with the facilities, work with the maintenance, work with what's been done for repairs, and can answer these questions. And I agree with Don about Tim spending his time and resources. I would just worry about the length and process of this. I think we need to look at something, but the length and process, again, the costs are our own resources and trusting that that's why we hired them to do their jobs, and maybe everything doesn't fit in a rating scale for some of the things, which I think Stephen mentioned the other night, that they were keeping some in-house, and then the bigger items, like you said, Betsy, would maybe be looked at.
Tim, do you?
Yeah, as I'm looking at the, the rating scale though, with the one that Brian referenced, the seven categories, I'm looking at how to, to make sure that they are interpreted or revised, not changing the, the content per se, but making it so we understand what data they were looking at and try to make it data that we can find here in Wisconsin, so that way there's the objective side of things. There's always going to be the subjective pieces, and that's when the board will have to sort through some of those, those areas when, when the, when people disagree or debate what the, what the needs versus wants. But I think if we can at least try to find ways to incorporate the seven categories or as many of those seven categories as possible, that's a good starting point. That's what I've been working on this weekend and into this next week for our next, whatever our next Strategic Planning Committee is.
And I think, you know, Brian brought that up, there's, there are a lot of steps to this process, and I think it's not, it's not always going to be a straight line. One of the things we need to do is, is finalize and vote on the, the parameters. Those are some very overall objectives, guidelines for the board and that I, I know there was a comment regarding, you know, you don't have to have consensus. Well, I think we've discovered if we don't have consensus on some of the bigger things, what that can lead to, and I, I believe on, on the parameters and process, we definitely need to have consensus with the board. Now, when we get down to solutions, that, that may be a different process, and so we, I'm sure we'll have some good discussion on those. Even then, at the end of that, I think we, at some point, will need to come to consensus to move forward. But again, there's parameters, there's taking a look at the, the maintenance items, and in my mind, I think we will likely separate those out. I think at the next meeting, we may be able to have a list and, and talk through that and maybe for all the buildings, possibly other than high school, come back with a list of these are the things that we can all agree on need to be done at the other schools. That piece may be fairly easy and may not need to go through that big prioritization process. Then after that, we're going to, we have already had many community members who want to come in and talk about some ideas that they have, and I think that's critical, we need to go back to that, get some ideas based on the parameters. And if we can say to, to community members and anyone else, and our consultants as well, these are the parameters that we've agreed on, and make sure that your ideas fit these parameters as a place to start. The prioritization piece then can also define what we consider to be needs and, and the areas that we will rate then, any of the ideas that come to us, that are presented to us. Again, I expect those will be things that possibly are outside the list of the maintenance. I'm hopeful that we can all agree kind of on that, that list of maintenance stuff. If we can't, then we'll have to find a way to do that. So there are a lot of steps to go through in this process, and, and the committee certainly is going to be putting in some work to, to take that process forward, so. Other comments or questions? That, next meeting for the Strategic Planning Committee will not happen until after the, the committees and new board members come on and the committees are, are assigned, because that could change the membership, and so it's important that that process happens. So there's a slight delay because of that, but then after that, once that committee is established, then that committee can kind of take what's happened so far and then move forward. Any other questions?
I guess I just have a comment. Stephen, we were talking about that use of a consultant or owners' rep. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we did talk about using that person on, just kind of as an ad needed basis and just with an hourly rate rather than higher amount in another firm with another expense. Is that correct?
Right, and I think in just, the intent was to just use that person's truth, this, when we think we need them to help us evaluate solutions. There may be a point then, once we go forward, if we go to a referendum, if it passes, then there would be a separate discussion of the board regarding an owners' rep for project to actually, if we actually are, are building something or renovating something, doing a lot of our owners' rep for that. But I think we agreed that during this process of evaluation, that we would look for a consultant that was going to use on just a, an hourly basis through this process and see how much we need to, that makes sense, is that right?
Right, and then the hourly basis of someone to kind of walk us through part of the process in the beginning as we, we, Stephen, myself, JP Collett, PRA, et cetera, as you look at developing, not from what the board direction is, if there's a solution, not the final solution, but options or things that the board would like to look at as far as cost and, and solution type, that this person will be along for that part, so that way there'll be oversight, so when a, when options are presented, that those aren't the, the options, that they've embedded through a third party neutral source per se, and that that person would then validate, yes, the process they went through to, whether it's the space program or et cetera, is valid and is best practice, and the solution they came up with is reasonable within the dollar amounts that they are proposing based on industry costs and standards, et cetera. Again, it's just a third party look, but on as needed basis, not right now through the end of the process, it'll be as it begins, so we're not paying for unused time.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? That's my report.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. We'll move on to section number five, A, Update on Teacher Compensation Language.
This is part of the Human Resources Committee report. On Friday, April 6th, we met, had two items on our agenda in an executive session. First one was the update on the teacher compensation language, and Chris and the HR department put together some information that has been sent to the board in terms of where we're at, projections for 2018, 19 compensation. A piece of that will be discussed in, in executive session when we talk about, it's the time of year when we sit down with the NEA and discuss and negotiate raises on base wages only. And so you have some information in your packet, and we had some updates from that. The good news is that it looks like, no matter what we do, that we will be able to budget on compensation. And also, we, our second item was insurance rates. We also had some very good news from Chris and Mary Ellen and the HR group on our health insurance rates. It looks, we were budgeting at 12 percent, and I think we're looking at them being somewhere in the, anywhere from two and a half to four percent. There's Chris. Right, between two and a half and four percent, which is excellent, which will also save us a fair amount of money next year, and so that was some excellent news as well. So, thank you, Chris, for, and the HR department and Mary Ellen for that information and for how we're updating.
Okay, well, thank you. Any questions for Betsy before we move on? Carrie Dunn, we will move on. Thank you, Betsy. Section six, A, New Business, A, Discussion and Possible Action on the Parking Lot Easement and Joint Use Agreement with the City of Milton regarding parking and traffic flow improvements at Milton West Elementary School. Mr. Johnson.
All right, well, this is the final high dot and deep cross for the parking lot project at Milton West. In your packet, you have a copy of the parking lot agreement and joint use agreement with the City of Milton for the district to construct the parking lot and traffic flow project through, of the modern park. This same item was on the city council agenda for, for six, then it passed there, and the agreement is very similar to the agreement that we entered into two years ago for the project at Milton East. Just a couple of the highlights that we talked about for a district to favor the construction, maintenance, and utilities of the lot and lighting. We would have tighter use of the lot during school hours and peak times for, for our use, otherwise the city could use it, and it's kind of a joint, joint benefit. And the construction easement is also included that for that project starting July 1st, so that's pretty much it.
So, yeah, there's a, there's a recommended motion to put this into effect, that they said this is the last step, requiring this board's approval to move this project forward.
I have a question from Mr. Schager on this. Mr. Schager, when you emailed the state about the $100 million, did you ask about money potentially for a parking lot?
Asked money, we asked for parameters for everything, whether it's traffic flow, human resource, specific building projects, anything. So we have a list, and we sent them, and we need to hear back.
This is a question I specifically asked Attorney General himself, who testified that money could be used for a parking lot, because many of the other things in that $100 million dollars are things we already have in place that we wouldn't be eligible for, like our police officer, we cannot get reimbursed for something we already have in place. So I wanted to make sure that that parking lot is included, because he said all things would be considered, and so.
Right, and we, we figured that'd be something that wouldn't be retro, but if we were at, for example, officer time, or we're looking at traffic flow like this situation, obviously makes it safer and secure by having safer traffic patterns, any kind of a building additions like entranceways or et cetera. So we, we had a list of, of items, and so we got an initial response, but the initial response a couple hours ago was just, we're, thank you for your, thank you for your ask. We will get back to you with the parameters once it's developed.
Right, and I know at the hearing, they said they wanted to have money in the district's hands by June 15th. So that would be nice if that would be eligible for some of that.
Without making.
Well, here's what happened. They originally, in the original bill, they had four people that would be responsible for this process, but the Senate undermined the assembly, and they cut it to one. That's probably why you didn't get a response. So there's only one person responsible for 3,000 schools.
Don, where's the money coming from? What, of what areas?
It's released from the budget. There's always extra money in the budget, and there was money released from budget by joint finance.
Nothing else is getting cut or taken away from for that money?
What's that?
Nothing else is getting cut or taken away from for that?
No, that's extra money that they have. They always have a reserve.
I would like to make motion to approve parking lot easement and shared use agreement between the school district and Milton City, Milton, regarding the parking and traffic flow improvements at West Elementary School and.
Second?
We've got a motion from Tom and a second from Karen. Any further concerns, questions, comments, observations? Carrie, none, all, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. I oppose the motion, Carrie's unanimously, so thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Please remain standing, Mr. Johnson. So now we're going to go on to B, which is the update on Milton High School Pool Hazard Assessment and Engineering Evaluation.
All right, as everyone is aware, the Milton High School pool and its hazard assessment done by EFC Insurance Carrier, the Risk Management Group. This, this takes place several times a year, not only the pool, but throughout, like Sarah, playgrounds, other different areas around the district. And as part of your packet, you guys received the report that they came back with. You know, they did find some positives about power operating the pool. You know, some of those positives include, like, you know, the district employs four certified pool operators that work and maintain the pool on a day-to-day basis. You know, it's properly cleaned and maintained, appropriate safety equipment, and all that stuff's in place. They did find quite a few substantial negatives, no real surprises that we're not, weren't aware of, that's like the fault, the falling walls, tile, the deck covers that are, you know, eroding and starting to cave in, you know, HVAC issues that they noted, and, you know, our aging dive blocks. In talking with the pool hazard assessment person that came down, you know, that this action only looks at the pool from a, you know, hazard or safety perspective, and a lot of different items that he identified, you know, would need to be looked into further depending on, you know, what we choose to do with the pool, you know, now and in the future. So, you know, based, based on that, he more or less pointed us in the direction of hiring a specific aquatics engineer to come in and back up and look at the items that were on this report, but also look at everything. I mean, that means from the pool vessel to the log, everything, you know, even down to the rusted one, yeah, that's what was happening in that pool area. The outfit that we chose to go with is Raymaker and Associates. They have worked with the district before that 2008, 2009 area with the Virginia Greenbaker Act, the comments that we had to do back then. And they're also helping districts similar in size, and also in our conference at Forest Sun Prairie and Shorewood, Milwaukee, that all have, you know, six lane pools about similar age that they're either currently working on or just completed assessments such as this. So the assessment is supposed to take about four weeks. They're going to look at proposing a short-term fix, which would, you know, fix a pool for, say, three to five years to kind of give us bias that if the board or community decided to choose to build a new one. Or they could also, they're also going to provide a 15 to 20-year repair, as if we choose to make a more long-term commitment to the pool. So, you know, this would be the most thorough assessment done to the pool. When it comes time to, the results, the team from Raymaker will come down and present the results to you, so it'll be available for, you know, any questions or anything that might come up with the pool, acting pool related, et cetera.
Like Don had mentioned earlier, we could be opportunity to have Zach Johnson and Stephen give you a tour of the pool area. I was a little hesitant about putting a lot of money into that pool prior to that visit. After that visit, I'm very hesitant about putting any money into that pool. A new addition was put on, was not compensated for airflow for the new pool, so I, I would encourage everyone, and Zach Johnson's probably going to take you for this, but to take, take a guided tour of that pool area. You will be surprised. You will be very surprised.
I suggest you do it while the team is in there practicing, while the Marlins are there. It's being used, it's way different when it's in full use. So you can see the sinking and the water that's not draining and the lack of capacity versus just walking through empty.
Oh, they, they definitely will. They'll be seeing all different.
I'm talking about us when you say we should. Yeah, I know. I'm talking about us when we go through, because it's a whole different aspect, just like any of our buildings.
So the fee, Stephen, is $7,500 for everything? When they come down, present the report and everything?
Yes, that's all, it's all included.
Okay.
Mr. Schager, I don't think this requires any action, does it?
No, it's just an update, and then when the report is available, the actual Raymaker will come down and, and report it to the board.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Stephen. All right, we're going to move on to miscellaneous, which is a staffing report, professional support staff hires, resignations, and retirements, and I believe we all received an updated copy of this April 9th date, right? So this does require approval of the staffing report.
I'd need approval of the staffing report containing two contracts, three resignations, and I think that's five retirement clauses.
I'll sign it.
We've got a, we have Betsy, we have Betsy on first. We have a motion from Betsy and a second from Don to approve the staffing report. Any questions or concerns? Carrie Dunn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. I oppose the app motion, Carrie's. Thank you. Next item, B, Gifts and Donations, and this also requires action for acceptance. We've got a list of $10,049.30 of gifts and donations.
I need them, want to make accept donations listed with great gratitude.
Second?
Got a motion from Tom and a second from Carrie to accept this list of gifts and donations with the board's gratitude. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. I oppose the motion, Carrie's. Thank you to all those that contributed to that. Okay, C, Meeting Dates, Upcoming Board and Committee Meetings.
For current, we have, tomorrow's the Board Canvas Service will be here at the district office at 8:30. We have expulsion Wednesday evening. We have expulsion Wednesday evening at 5:45. Our next school board meeting is the 23rd at 6:30 here. And then just a reminder that the 26th is the trade fair, 3 to 5 at Milton High School. Again, it's on the 27th, and 26th will be with our kids right after that, from the quarter.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Let's see, so then we come to section, I guess, section eight, Executive Session, and this would require a motion to go into Executive Session pursuant to State Statutes 19.85 here in 1 CE, 19.82 current one, 11.7, 18.82, and 18.24. If you don't mind, I'm just going to kind of cut down to the bottom where it says preliminary, the purpose of it, preliminary notices of nonrenewal, six, administrative contracts, three, discussion regarding strategy for negotiations with the Milton Education Association. So we've got a motion from Tom and a second from Betsy, and this does require a roll call vote, so I'll start down here, Don.
Hi.
Brian?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Betsy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So we will consider ourselves going into Executive Session again. We thank you all for being here tonight, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Now, this, there is a potential for coming back into open session or move to Executive